I'm gonna abstain, so I wasn't there.
Fair enough.
I wasn't there.
And I will... Oh, true. Doug, you probably should abstain also.
Yeah.
So we'll have Paul and I, Doug abstaining, Steve abstaining, Brad and Lynn saying aye. Got that, Chris? Perfect. Alright, so the next sort of business would be a planning commission report. I think, Bob, that might be you.
Yeah, it's not much more different than last meeting. We decided to have the public hearing for the updated town plan in July. So, you know, I think as we get towards, maybe next week, we'll have Janice posted again in the news guide. But, you know, we're gonna play it by ear as far as if it's virtual or if we, you know, have it, you know, open, but most likely it'll be virtual like this at this point. And it's, the purpose of it is to, you know, just let people give their input on the updated plan. And then coming out of that, we'll turn it over to you guys. And then you should, you know, give us your feedback. We'll make changes and then you can have a, you have to have a public hearing the select board does, once we make the odds that you guys want. I think we're good up through the middle of, I think it's August, the governor extended it. So the due date is in the middle of August now.
Okay. Alright, so we have to anticipate a meeting at some point, but we'll, alright, great. Okay, anybody have any questions about that? Okay. Um, next up on our agenda is a road commissioner's report, which, Paul, you may have some other things to add. We had on here, sort of updating on the bid process for Little Village Road and then also just the grant-funded projects, which we had talked about because some changed, or some updated deadlines, I guess. But if there's anything else you want to add, please feel free.
Um, did, did they, last, Janice told me that Dambie Hill got extended to October, but I never heard back from, she was supposed to call me when the lady called her, I forget what her name was, that's in charge.
I think that's a, that's a grant and aid from the, through the planning commission, so it's a, it's Barbara, noise, pulling noise, I think, yeah.
I still haven't heard back from that, but our next project that they're working on, once they get, I haven't had a chance to go up and check the Dambie Timmerfield, but they were brushing and ditching. And then they had one that has to be done, is the one on Dambie Mountain Road, that culvert by Davy's camp. And Alan was supposed to come down and go over that with Laurie and Larry on that. And I didn't hear anything about the meeting, so, and they have got the culvert ordered, the mat material they need for the ditch, and we'll probably close the road off for a couple hours until we at least get the culvert laid, and then we can work on slowing them down, just going through one lane until they finish it up. It should be probably just a couple hour project to get the culvert in. And then the rest of it will be putting a stone material down through on the edge to slow the water down from the camp down through to the next culvert. Um, the other, are you gonna get into the, the bids on that, or is that later on, Lynn, for that?
No, I can, yeah, and I can, I can talk a little bit about that.
Before you, before you start on that, is there a deadline on the Dambie Mountain Road?
Yes, June 30.
July 1st.
And we'll be able to meet that?
That, yeah, yeah, it should, they're supposed to start on that hopefully next week.
Okay, good.
The bigger problem is the Dambie Hill Road, that if, if Janice is correct that we have till October, we're fine. But if we don't have until October, then, then I don't know what to do about that. I don't know if we can get an extension or not.
When I spoke to her on Tuesday, she said it's July 1st or June 30th.
On Dambie Hill Road?
Yes. And it's very hard to figure out what it is on Dambie Hill Road, because it's all those, you know, those mileage numbers, instead of saying like from Ann Rothman's driveway to, you know, the next house or whatever. It's, you remember that report that we had sometime back in the fall, how they break that down? It's very difficult to know where they're doing it.
Well, the main thing that needs to be, and when we talked with Charlie before he got done, is we got a grant for, just under 20,000, almost 4,000, 3,800 or 900 is out of our pocket, which we can use up in labor, and then the rest is grant money. And so we've got it figured, Charlie had it figured out, and I think we'll probably do the same thing as we'll start. Where it needs the most, as the drainage on the ditch, is start at the bottom of Bond's Hill and just keep working up towards Annie Rothman's. And if we don't run out of money before then, or time, then probably the next one is that hill right there, just past the Colvin Hill, that steep hill from IHAS is down through, because that's always washing out in that ditch. And that's where that other driveway comes in, that we may have to get in touch with the person to, because apparently back then, they never got a driveway permit, or maybe they didn't figure they need one. But I did look the other day, and there is a small ditch on that side. Whether we have to ditch it or not, I'm not sure. Because I, the only water problem we had is coming out of the, uh, oh, the Addie Place, Daphne Addie's house down through to Laurie Rothair's, that always washes out. And that has to be dug and stone lined down through there. So if we don't, if we run out of money before we get to Annie Rothman's or there, we'll probably, Charlie thought probably the best bet is just apply for another grant to get that other one done.
Yeah, because this is, this is all part of that work, as Brad reminded us, it's all part of that document that we have to do by such and such a date, and we're keeping away at it. So as long as we're working somewhere within what we're supposed to be doing, we're okay. But at some point, we will have to identify exactly where all those mileage markers are, to make sure that we can say we did it. But my guess is, we're, by working in the most, if I'm working in the worst spots first, I'm, it's reasonable to think we're covering those spots. But our bigger problem is that if that due date, if Brad's right, that Janice says that's July 1, and that was my understanding from what Charlie told us, was it was June 30, July 1. And I'm confused as to why she didn't tell you that, Paul, but, because she's indicate to you that it might be October, right?
I thought that's what she told me, and she, I said, well, make sure Barbara's got my number, and she can call me. And then I can hear it direct, rather than, I hate going through three parties, because a lot of times, you know, things will get mixed up. I'd do it forever, so, but I thought she was gonna check and then get back with me. But I don't remember the day. I don't know if it was, it's Thursday, Thursday, that may have been Tuesday, when I came down through from,
So the question, Paul, is that if the due date, if the completion date is June 30, can we do it by then, or is this something that we should try to beg for an extension? I don't know if we can get one, but maybe we need to at least try. What's your thought?
Well, I think grab that one on Dambie Mountain Road, because that's culvert, which definitely has to be changed to let the water flow, so don't dig that little hill out there. And then, like I said, that, I'm hoping that's only a two or three day project. And then we can jump right from that on Dambie Hill. I don't think we've got to put new culverts in there, it just has to be ditched. Because that's always given us problems down through there with mud. Once you get partway up the hill, we got that big bubble that comes up in the middle of the road. And it hasn't been too bad the last two years, but a couple of years, it raised up enough so your car would get belly hung on it. And there's actually a spring on the road underneath, and that's what our plan was when we ditched it. Close that hill off for a half a day, or whatever we need to get, dig into that road and get that spring running out of that middle of the road down, down through.
You're thinking about that we can get done what we need to, to satisfy that grant before July 1?
I'm, if the weather holds with two people, I, I think they can do it. They've been doing a good job.
Yeah.
And they, and they do know that if they need a fresh rider, we can get one.
You want me to call Barbara and just ask if it's possible for an extension in case we need it? It seems like that might be a smart prudent thing to do.
One, it probably won't hurt, just to give us a little question.
Yeah, alright, I'll call Barbara, I'll call Barbara tomorrow and just see if, what, what the possibility is. Okay. Alright, um, anything else you want to add?
Yeah, I got just a quick update on Parker Road. Stopped there a couple different times in the past two weeks, and they do have the end bridge abutments in. They were pouring concrete the day that we went up to look at the project with Josh and Michael. They were pouring it in, and it looks like they're getting ready to set some girders in. And the only thing that I noticed, and I had to bug, um, well, Greg on, was they lined the bridge up with a brook, which is probably the smart thing to do, but it's not a straight shot across. It's not as bad as what the temporary bridge is, but, you know, but at least it's wide. And so they are coming right along, and hopefully, um, they can, well, I'm gonna say another month or two where they can actually start passing traffic through, and then we can get the final cleanup around the bridge, bridge done.
Alright.
And one other thing, it's not anything to do with the roads, but I think they should put this out there to the public, and I'm still waiting to hear back from Sheriff Cox, is the issue that we checked on, Lynn, with the shooting in the old Dambie pit.
Yeah, it's fine to go into that, we have it later on our agenda, but it's fine to move that up, on our agenda focus.
Okay, no, I,
That's okay, let's do it now. It's alright, so it's the complaint concerning the use of town property on Little Village Road. You can, you can do that now, Paul, if you want, it's fine.
Alright, well, I didn't realize the complaint came into Lynn, that somebody said that there was a lot of automatic weapon firing in the quarry, the town quarry, and I'm like, there's no quarry up here, so. As Lynn and I are leaving, I said, let's take a run up into the town pit with the stump sire and the culverts and stuff. And so we went to the first, the first part where the culverts and the major part of the dumping is, and there wasn't any targets up or anything, so I had never gone up any farther. So Lynn and I both drove up around to the upper area, and sure enough, um, there's, they had been a lot of shooting going on up there. There was a desk, they're getting to the point where I think they found it now, because the Dambie Mountain Road, uh, area pits are getting overused, and they're finding another pit, and it's on our property, the town property, so I, I'm not sure if you checked with John Thrasher,
I did.
If we, if we can just put up, um, no trespass, or do we have to put Dambie property, or just no trespass on this area? I hate to put a gate up there.
No, we can, we can say no trespass, Town of Dambie. What we don't want to do is say the hunting, fishing sort of thing, because you have to register that to make that, you know, and you have to post the entire property. So it's just, it's a, it's no trespass for any, any reason, Town of Dambie, and we want to let the sheriff know, and it is enforceable.
Okay.
Um, yeah, the only reason, I mean, a gate would be a pain, but, but starting to see that they're starting to ju, drop off junk up there is worrisome.
Well, there used to be a gate. There was always a gate there.
There's no sign of one now.
I don't remember ever being a gate there.
Oh yeah, I've seen the gate there.
Oh, you've seen something, I've never seen.
What side of the brook was it on, Brad?
The, uh, let me get my, the, the, I'm gonna say the far side of the brook from the road. Uh, could we, could we do a simple kind of gate, like, you know, some six by six posts and a chain or something?
Boy, I tell you, we put a chain across, and we're gonna be liable if somebody comes flying down through. That happened on another piece of property, I know, uh, just for the danger factor, even though you're trespassing. Uh, I think somebody up north ended up got sued, because they put a cable across their private driveway to their camp, and a four wheeler or snowmobile went by and basically decapitated a guy, and they ended up got sued.
How much does a gate cost?
I think we should get, I'm not sure.
I think it's, Doug, you would know.
Personally, I would rather try, I would rather try the no trespass signs for a bit, and see if it helps. If it don't, you're probably gonna have to put some posts in, and, uh, I don't think, it could be more than a couple hundred bucks for a gate and some posts.
I think if you get a galvanized gate for, you know, 40 bucks or something, or maybe 75, I can't remember. Doug, Steve, do you have any idea?
I'll just, first. Try poster signs and see what that, they know that they're not up in there.
Yeah, and the other thing is, It does bring to mind, I know we don't have an ordinance like this, but we might want to consider at some point, um, you know, having a fine for, for dumping, because, you know, what's going on up there is, you know, they're starting to dump things. I mean, you know, there's a large desk up there, um, you know, we have other places in town where we've had people dumping mattresses and desks, and, you know, kinds of crud, um, so, um, maybe not for tonight, but something to think about.
Well, they put the signs up on the Hopper Road years ago, and the one over on Dambie Mountain Road, and I believe one other place, uh, may have been bottom of Parish Hill, there were just little no dumping signs, but I don't know if they're, and back then, they basically wouldn't enforce it, because they had, they have a video of the people doing it. I mean, the laws for them sketchy, and I don't know what, if an ordinance is gonna help. I mean, if it, if it would get somebody fined, that'd be a different story, but.
No, it's only if you can identify whose garbage it is.
Yeah, it's, it's hard enough to identify the garbage issue that we're having with the recycling dumpster. I don't think a gate is that expensive, and I would be in favor of putting a gate across there.
And I'd just comment that from looking at it, it might need to be more than just a gate. We might need some posts along to either side of the gate, or they'll just go around it.
Yeah, or some boulders.
Yeah.
Well, well, if we put it on this side of the brook, where it's stable, because there are four wheeler tracks up in there. So if we put it on this side of the brook, I'm thinking that it'll stop them from going, you know, close enough so they can't go around it. And I don't know if there's access to go through the brook and up there with a four wheeler. I know they can't with a vehicle, but, um, yeah, I mean, for a couple hundred dollars to put some, a couple decent posts in and a gate, it might be worth it. But I'll leave it up to everybody.
I think that sounds like we should do, and if you'll take care of it, that'd be great, Paul.
Yeah, and I think we still should post the sign, no trespass in there anyway.
Right.
Yeah.
Do you need a motion for that, or are you just gonna do it?
I, I think a motion for the no trespassing sign would be a good idea.
And a gate.
And, and also to inform the sheriff that we would like that policed.
I would make a motion to install a gate, no trespassing signs, and add it to the sheriff's patrol.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, second it, but we're gonna have to put it off until we get these other projects done.
Right, absolutely.
So we've got a motion on the floor made and seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, uh, we'll call it. Paul?
Hi.
Doug?
Yeah.
Uh, Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Lynn, yes, okay. Um,
And I got one question for either Doug or Steve. Where, I know Tractor Supply's got gates and stuff, but has anybody got an old gate around where, if they're not using it, that we could, uh, get it? I know there's a few places, you got them laying on the ground, but I, I don't, right offhand, I can't remember. There must be some old, uh, a gate that would, where we could wrap a chain around it with a lock. I mean, just thinking of saving a little money, but.
How long has it gotta be? How long has it gotta be?
Uh, average driveway or road is usually like 14 or 15 feet.
Yeah, it'd need to be at least 14 feet, I think.
Yeah, and they can put some boulders around that. I'm sure there's gonna, or just even dump a load of material that's left over from this bridge project.
Well, let's leave it that if Steve or Doug or any of us, um, think of one that could be purchased, used, and less expensively, that we'll let Paul know. But otherwise, um, I know I bought mine at Tractor Supply, and I got a pretty good price doing it through them, so. Of course, I bought a bunch of them, so I don't know, but.
Oh, come on, Steve, one from you.
Mine are hanging. Mine aren't lying on the ground, letting my horses out.
Alright.
Um, so the other thing in the road commissioner's report was to talk about Little Village Road. Do you want me to do that, Paul?
Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so Paul and I met with Michael LaPointe from USDA and, and Josh Caravelle, um, from Fish and Wildlife, and looked at the work that the crew had done on Little Village Road. And there was a miscommunication, and, um, you know, I applaud their initiative, they went and, you know, started the work. But the work they did was not to the satisfaction of what the specs are needed. And so what we're being asked to do is to put the project out to bid. Um, we've gotten a 60-day extension, and we can get a further extension if, if after, if during those 60 days we get a bid and the contractor needs, needs more time, we can get a further extension. But essentially, the rock that was put in, um, on the bottom, um, there's not enough of the four foot blocks, and they didn't dig down deep enough, so essentially, the fear is that when the river comes up again, it's just gonna erode, erode underneath those blocks. And so that needs to be reset. The good news is we can use some of the stone that we've already brought in. Um, some of that can be reused, it's large enough, and that can count as our in-kind grant. Um, and the small stones won't go to waste, because as Laurie and Larry pointed out, you know, all that ditching work we have to do all over town to meet standards, um, like on, on Dambie Hill, um, we have, we can use that rock. Um, so my task is to put together a bid request, and one of the things that we have on our list here, um, maybe, Bob, you can put it up. We have a list of contractors. Um, yeah, down there it says contractor list. Um, I sent it to everybody. I thought maybe we could just take a quick look at that list and see if that's the list we want, or are there any contractors you want to add or delete to that list? We don't need to advertise this in the newspaper, we just need to send it, and we just need to get three contractors, and it's okay to send it to, directly to the contractors. Um, so it looks like, it's a,
Well, like Josh was saying, Lynn, is we got Otter Creek, uh, the bridge guys down there on a Parker Road, and it's only a mile up the road.
Yeah.
Um, that would be, you know, one of the ones on the list, because they, they've done a couple of bridges for us, you know, High Bridge and the other one, and then, and then, uh, a couple of other contractors, whether they're local or not, as long as they get the equipment and do it per spec.
Bob, that doesn't look like a contractor list.
Yeah, that's a, that's a pity kid.
Let me, let me read the, let me read the lists. So we've got Cold River, just as Paul just said. Um, um, uh, Chet, uh, Chet McClellan, Abbott, Allard, Daniels, Adams, Fabian, Davenport, Markowski. Um, so that's the list that we've used in the past. Anybody have the need to add or subtract from that list?
What about Hunter?
Yeah.
Yep, Hunter Escrivation.
Yeah. Anything else? And we can always add to it, we're not, I, I, it's gonna take me a little while to get together all this bid information. They're only just today sent me the final specs on the work that needs to be done. So if anybody thinks of any, we can always add them, just let me know.
Okay.
I'm sorry, and do we have a, uh, do we have a unidentified person with us, Bob? Somebody with a U?
Oh, I just said, it sounds good, I said.
Yeah.
It says user, yeah, I'm not sure who that is.
Can we ask that person to identify themselves, since it's a public meeting, we're, we're supposed to have a list of everybody who's there? Hello, hello, do we have a visitor? We'd love to have visitors, but please identify yourself.
Oh, they're unmuted.
They're working on it. It takes time.
Maybe it's me, is it me? Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I don't know.
They're crossing the path.
Alright.
So we're just, to let that person know, our minutes are supposed to reflect everybody who's at the meeting, and we certainly would want to welcome you, so please, if you're there.
July meeting.
They may be having tech, these will go on, see if they do later. Um, so moving on would be considering,
Before we, before we move on, I have another question of the road commissioner.
Sure.
What is the status of the trailer?
Uh, same as it was two months ago.
So he hasn't done any work on it?
Nope, because, uh, they're using it to transport the excavator back and forth, and there's no problems. So, I mean, it's definitely gotta be worked on, but, um, Tommy's pit has been pretty hectic to get in and get everything weighed. But they are using it, and we do have a way to get the excavator around, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's gonna have, it's, we're gonna have to do something eventually, but they're, they're doing it without asking or without any qualms like we had, or with the ruckus we had from before, so, you know, there was no questions involved, uh, so I'm not gonna drive it or nothing. They did it.
Right.
And they were doing it, so that's,
Right.
It's been fine all these,
Yeah.
I say it's been all these other years, so I don't, can't see if I've heard anything now.
Yeah, I know we had that opposition to it, but that kind of went away, so, I mean, yes, I definitely wanna make sure it's totally safe, which it is apparently. I mean, um, so at some point, when we get a chance, um, we will check into doing the stuff that we talked about a month or two ago, and, uh, if that's up to standards and everything, and it works, uh, we'll put the money into, um, having the breaks all redone and that little bit of ramp decking that we need.
Okay. Alright, uh, anything else? Alright, uh, anything else for Paul?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Anything else for Paul before we move on? Alright, um, the next we have a resolution from the Vermont League of Cities and Towns and maybe that's something that you could put up for us, Bob. Um, there's a cover letter that comes with it. The resolution is the last thing on our list there and then there's a, a cover letter. Um, I sent it every, so if Bob can't get it up, everybody has that in the material that I, I sent them. Um, the reason we hope to put it up is that if we do have a visitor, that they would be able to see it as well. But essentially it's a resolution from, here, let me get it. I can read it. Um. Uh, so the cover letter reads. Um, so this is from David Gunn at the Vermont League of Cities and Towns. Uh, thank you, uh, wanna say, thank you for all that you're doing to serve your communities in a time of uncertainty and preparation of economic recovery. The work you do is critical and clearly has required tireless dedication. While you may not be named as a frontline hero in the emergency, we all know that you are. Yay, so we're being championed. That's nice. Uh, the Vermont League of Cities and Towns has joined the National League of Cities campaign to lobby Congress for direct federal aid to cities and towns throughout the country. The VLCT board voted to participate in the campaign financially and through active advocacy. To that end, we've prepared the attached resolution as both a Word document and PDF file for select boards to adopt to show your support to our federal delegation. So in other words, we're, we're being asked to sign a resolution that will go to the federal delegation to try to, to get some money for towns and cities. Um, we're asking that you review it and if you agree, adopt it, have it signed by the board chair. If possible, date it and return it to us. They're gonna forward the resolutions to our senators Leahy's and Sanders and the current Congressman Welch. Um, hopefully by Friday, June, uh, twelfth, which is tomorrow. Thank you for your consideration. And then the resolution, um. Oh, I see you got that up there, Bob. Great, thanks. Um, the resolution is, uh, yeah, can you pop that one up? Um, so it basically says, you know, we, the municipalities. Um, hmm. I can read through this, but I think everybody had it. Has everybody had a chance to read it?
Yes.
Um, how do people feel about, um, signing on it? So it's trying to get some money that would. Um, you know, help with, uh, offset some of the expenses and the economic loss due to, uh, you know, the economy being so bad.
I moved to sign it.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm sorry, who seconded it?
Paul.
Paul, great. Okay, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, Paul?
Hi.
Doug?
Hi.
Brad?
Hi.
Steve?
Yeah.
Lynn, aye. Alright, um. So next up, uh, our copier contract, um, I don't have much to say about, well, I can tell you what's coming up. The contract itself, uh, Doug, uh, um, called me late in the, uh, evening to say that they waited all day to get the copy from the company and it never came in. Um, but essentially what's happening that we should be prepared for is that, you know, um, our copier contract is acquiring and so it brings us to. The position that most businesses are in where you either, um, after you've leased it, you can now own it. Um, but if you own it, you now have to provide all your own toner and, uh, materials and you have to pay by the hour to have it maintained. And I will tell you in my experience, it also means you're the low man on the totem pole to get anybody there to maintain it. Um, and, but that's what you can do. Um, you know, you basically, um, sort of, you know, on your own with your copier. Or it's time to upgrade your copier and you get, um, you know, you extend your lease payment. Um, Doug explained that it's in our budget to have a lease payment, so we do have the money there. Um, I, I'll weigh in with my feelings about it. I, I went through this at Smokey House for years and there were times when I treated it like a car and said, oh no, I've paid it off. I now own it. Yay, I don't have any more payments. And I will tell you that, 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 that kicked me in the, you know what? It, it did not work very well because, um, I ended up paying hourly for people to come from, I don't know, it never seemed like they were coming from Brooklyn. They were coming from Bennington or Albany or Burlington and I had to pay for their travel time and it was a hundred and fifty an hour. And I had to pay for materials and equipment. And then the worst thing was that they would say that, oh gosh, that's so old, we don't even have the parts anymore. And so sooner or later I ended up having to bite the bullet and get a new copier. Um, so, um. My thought would be that maybe we vote tonight to let, uh, Doug and Janice make the decision. They know the copier, they know what their needs are and we have the money in the budget. Um, but, um, if anybody else wants to weigh in.
I totally agree with that.
Yeah, I, I do too.
Anybody wanna make a motion to?
I didn't quite hear what Paul said.
Yeah, I totally agree with the contract because.
Yeah.
It's almost like leasing a vehicle, you know, once you go beyond and, um, it's nothing but headaches and if we're only using the copier once a, every, once or twice a week. Now maybe you could afford to wait, but we can't, you know, um, I, I, I agree. We just keep up with the contract and we got new equipment. We get everything taken care of and, oh, I'm, I'm in for a hundred percent on this.
I'll, I'll make a motion a week over.
Alright, so we got a motion from Doug. Can I hear a second?
I'll second that one.
Okay.
Paul, second.
Great, uh, Paul, you in favor?
Yes.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. Okay, so we will, uh, Doug, so Doug and Janice can work that out and, uh, they've got our authority to do whatever. Great. Um. Paving in front of the town office. Brad, do you wanna talk a little bit about that?
Yes, we had intended to pave the ramp, um, to the front door and we kinda ran out of time last fall. And then we talked about paving the whole width in front of the building because to the left of the front door, there's quite a hole. That fills up with water and it just seems like it would be a very good idea to have it paved, graded from the building down toward the existing paved area. And I'd like to see that get done.
So I thought you were asking for like a twelve foot section. Is that what you're talking about? Are you expanding that?
The width of the building to the parking lot. So it, it probably is twelve feet of grass, that grass strip in front of the building. Doing away with that, so any water that comes off the roof runs down the parking lot and down the road. And, um, it automatically makes a ramp, so the building is very handicapped accessible and we're, uh. You know, we're not talking about the wooden ramp anymore.
So the entire length of the building, there'd be no grass?
Correct.
It looked like.
Ecstatic, come on, you're the artist.
Well, it doesn't look very good now. There's a big hole, there's, um.
That's all.
Can't you fill in a hole with, with, with dirt and reseed it?
Yeah, right. I, I agree, oh yeah. I don't, I hate sad old blacktop. That looks like shit.
I don't see why it would look like shit. There's plenty of buildings that are blacktopped and that way we could move the parking in a little bit. So they wouldn't all be hanging out in the parking lot as far as they are now. It would solve a couple of problems. Now we get assault delivery and everybody has to run out and move their cars. If they were parked closer to the building, that wouldn't be a problem.
Then the snow come off the roof and onto the cars, that wouldn't be good.
But you don't have to go right to where the snow falls, but you could still gain five feet.
I don't know. I'd have to look at it. There's not that wide a section of grass.
No, I don't think so either.
About twelve feet.
I think we ought to just forget that.
I, I don't know. I didn't realize.
Oh, here we go. Nothing gets done. Move on. I don't care.
We fill the holes and put grass back, seed it back.
Let's move on.
So I do think that the idea of taking care of the water and, and doing something so that it slopes away is important. And I think it'd be fine to maybe pave some of it and determine, and, and I, we do want the handicap ramp. But I don't, I'm not, the only thing I'm not in favor of Brad is, is, is making it so that there's absolutely no grass in front of the building. I just think aesthetically that that's. Um, you know, it's just not very appealing.
Well, it's not like it's a beautiful lawn. It's a pain to mow. It does not get mowed on a regular basis. It does not get trimmed. It's ugly. Uglier than blacktop would be.
Well, that's a matter of opinion.
Uh, how do other people feel about it?
I'm staying silent. I don't, I don't, I, like, I, it was getting mowed fairly regularly. I don't know why it's not. Cause Donna used to mow it like every Thursday or Friday. It only takes a couple of minutes and, uh, to mow it and. I don't know why it isn't getting done. I can, I can.
Well, part of it is because we only have two people and they've got a lot to do. I'm not blaming anybody for it. It's just a fact of life. There's two people instead of three people.
Well, we hire somebody come down and mow it then.
Yeah, and, and that's, that's a short-term thing versus the long-term of once.
I'm not, I'm not being sarcastic. I just, I, I, I gotta agree that pavement right up through the building, it ain't gonna look too pretty, so. And then the first thing we're gonna, somebody's gonna drive right into the building. Um, I don't know, I.
Well, you could pick up, you could pick up the marble blocks that are now covered by the earth. And set them at a distance out to the building, out from the building, so that you couldn't drive all the way to it.
Let's, let's look at it at a later time. I mean, the road, like you said, the road crew's got a, and Tommy's got his business tied up and. Uh, then we can look at it and, you know, maybe improve it. I can mention to, uh, either Lori or, uh, Larry, just to take that mower and hit it. You know, at least once a week and I'm not.
Well, and let's get the hole filled it in the meantime, please.
Yeah, so. Yeah, let's, let's do, let's get the hole filled. And what do we need to fill that hole in? Do we need compost or do we need more dirt?
We need like less than a yard of soil. Or you could put shore pack, anything, but that's filling with water and it's gotta be seeping back under the building and that's not a good thing.
We must have some soil coming out of ditches somewhere that we can put in there, don't we?
Absolutely.
I got topsoil. I got topsoil up here. I'll bring a freaking bucket load down.
Thank you.
Bring it down. The sheer pack, the sheer pack will keep the water out, but I'll bring a bucket load down with my tractor. Somebody wants to rake it out, cause. Uh, I'll bring it down and somebody can rake it. I got some grass seed.
Yeah, they just, they just bought a ton of grass seed. I'm sure they can throw some out on.
Wants, you've got topsoils, that's fine. If you wanted some compost to be, I've got tons of compost, so let me know.
Yeah, cause one of my, one of my trips down through when I had brush hogging with my big tractor, I'll, uh, I'll bring down a bucket load of topsoil and. And just drop it off. And if somebody wants to rake it around, uh, once, yeah, um. I don't, I don't mind. I, I keep it. I keep a tandem load usually at the house here anyway, so.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe we can just get the road crew. If I drop it off, they can just rake it around a little bit. I, I can smooth it out pretty good with my bucket and then they can trim it up a little bit, put a little grass on it and then we'll go from there.
Good, thank you.
I've got, I've got some mulch hay if we wanted to put some hay on it while the grass is growing. Let me know.
Yep, okay.
Alright, alright. Um, let's see, next up is talking about Dump Day. Uh, we have in our packets, Janice was nice enough to send us, uh. Trying to see where it is, the hazardous waste days. Um, maybe Bob can put that up for us. Um, I can pull it up on my.
There's three of them. There's one in July on the twenty-fifth, one in September on the twelfth. And one in October on the third.
Yeah. So if we wanted to line Dump Days up with those, it might be a good idea, but then there are some issues with Dump Day that maybe we. Need to tackle. I mean, I know everybody, including me, wants to get rid of things. Um, I'm struggling a little bit with, um, asking for volunteers to do Dump Day because I don't think we can control whether people wear masks. And, um, and so asking volunteers means that they're putting themselves at risk. Um, so I'm, I'm just wondering, anybody have any ideas or thoughts?
Well, we worked with volunteers before.
But we didn't do it in nineteen.
And we usually end up and have, uh, Stephen help doing the heavy lifting with, uh. Uh, stuff going into the dumpsters. So, yeah, it'd be nice if we had three people there. I know last year I was the only one. Cause you were dealing with, um, you and Gary were dealing with issues and, so I didn't mind. I was there. I had two gallons of ice water to drink, but. It did get hectic for a while, but we did manage, you know, we got through it and, um.
Well, the thing is, who's ever collecting, you know, there's, there are issues in terms of safety with COVID-19. Um, if we're collecting money and handling money, that's a potential contamination. Um, the fact that who was ever brief vehicles and talking with people and assessing to, how much to charge, it, we can't guarantee that people, we can ask people to wear a mask. We could maybe say that, no, there's no admittance if they don't wear a mask. That way it would protect our volunteer. Um, our volunteer wears a mask and there's no, if somebody shows up and they don't have a mask, we could, we could have some paper masks to handle them or they could, they just have to leave. Um, but I am cognizant of the fact that we should be protecting our volunteers.
Right. I agree with you.
And, uh, also is the twenty-fifth gonna be, haven't they extended this, uh. Quarantine thing or the thing for another month? I know they're opening, uh, some restaurants and stuff, but there's also backfired on a few places and it's starting, it's had some, uh. A lot of new cases because people are starting to get out of the public again. Well, I'm wondering if the twenty-fifth is gonna be a little too soon.
Um.
I think it might be nice to consider September. It's a little cooler usually.
Yeah, I want to have bring two gallons of water.
What, what, um, what, that's not a bad idea. Let's, let's book it for September twelfth. Um, gives a little more time for things to settle down and also, um, it is cooler. It's true. That July, it's brutal down there then.
Yeah, that sounds good to me.
Alright. Anybody wanna make a motion to your Dandy Dump Day on September twelfth?
I'll move.
Alright, so Doug moved. Anybody want a second?
Yeah.
Okay, Steve's second. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. Um, all in favor, let me.
Lynn, can I?
Yeah.
Lynn, can I jump in while I'm still thinking of it?
Sure.
Uh, got to do a Dump Day in a way is, uh, I wanna send out a big thank you to Jesse Pyle for Green Up Day. Um, he went out as usual and whatever he had for a crew and they picked up, grabbed all kinds of stuff and he. Emailed me after Green Up Day saying that there was a pile of fourteen tires sitting on the corner of, um. Dandy Hill Road and Collin Hill that wanted to know if he could bring them down sometime the following week down to the dump. And, I mean, they did a bang up job as usual, picking up a lot of the bags. And then I gotta give credit to Laurie because, uh, that week, that right after that, uh, Larry was off. And when I got ahold of Laurie, uh, she started on her own and she went around town cutting up branches that were sticking out in the road. She picked up all the tires unbeknown that Jesse was gonna do it and the bags on the west side that they never got to. And Laurie just, um, she went out and then she started doing the roadside mowing. And four days she had almost all the roads done, uh, except for Dambi Pollard Road. So, uh, she took it upon herself to be in by herself, uh, to get all this stuff done. So I just wanna give her a much deserved, uh, good job. And, uh, and thank Jesse for, as usual, helping us clean up the town on dump day.
Yeah. I, um, glad you mentioned Jesse and it would probably be a nice thing, Steve. Are you comfortable if I send Jesse an email and thank him from all of us? Is that good?
Sounds good.
Yeah, I'll do that.
Cause he does a hell of a good job and Laurie does a hell of a job too.
Yeah, very grateful to both of them. All right. Dambi Dump Day on September 12th. Paul, you in favor?
Aye.
Doug?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn, yes. Okay. Uh, next on our agenda is appointments to the Rutland Solid Waste District. And I understand from Janice and my memory from last year that Steve Haynes, you're our representative and that Jez is our alternate. Is that correct?
I'm our representative. I have no idea if we have an alternate or not. And most of the time they're meeting while I'm milking.
Mm-hmm. We, we do have an alternate, but I'm not sure he's ever, um, participated either. So what you're saying is that it's, uh, difficult for you to represent the town because the meetings conflict with your work schedule?
Yes, and I've talked to them about it with both of the people that have been in charge up there that when the meetings are at 6:30 and I'm still in the barn at 6:30, I can't make it to West Rutland.
Right. Um, so do you think we should try to find somebody else?
Well, if you can get somebody else, it would be better because there's a, you know, I, I talk with them on the phone periodically during the month, but I'm not attending the meeting. So the town isn't getting a say in what's happening because I cannot make it.
Yeah. Well, I just wanna say, Steve, I'm really appreciative of the help you give us and understanding everything that is required for solid waste and the recycling. I, I, um, I appreciate that. Um, um, and I frankly don't know who else to appoint. So, um, so if you're willing to do it again, I'd, I'd probably float your name again.
Well, you can keep my name on there unless somebody else wants the job. And I'll keep talking with Mark once a month, but, you know, unless something changes, I'm not gonna be able to make meetings.
Right, right. I understand.
So I got, I got a question for Steve. Now, can, have you been getting enough information of them through a phone call? Apparently you have because you've been keeping us up to date on stuff. Is that, I mean, we've been doing these meetings over the phone. And is there anything that important at the meeting that, um, even though you can't attend, if they, they can't relay to you as the representative of Dambi, that you could still keep doing the job you've been doing?
Well, the problem is that when the meeting is happening, if I'm milking and I can't participate over the phone or go to the meeting, then I can't vote on anything. So they can tell me how they voted and what happened, but I have no ability to voice my opinion or to vote on matters that sometimes need an outside opinion.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I would, um, if we don't have an alternative to Steve, I would entertain a motion to, uh, reappoint Steve. Um, and we can, you know, we can look to see, I mean, it'd be great if there's an alternate that could attend the meeting. But Steve could also be, um, on the district so that the two of them can work together.
That'd be a good job for Brad.
No.
Brad, you game?
No.
How many votes got for Brad?
If elected, I will not serve.
Okay. Um, all right. So, uh, anybody want to make a motion to, uh, reappoint, uh, Steve?
I'll make the motion.
I'll.
Okay. So Doug made a motion. Do I get a second?
I'll second it and, you know, Steve will just keep us informed best he can till we do get somebody.
Do you think Jesse Piles would have any inclination to do that?
We can check because I, we still need an alternate and somebody who might. And so we can check with him. And, and we should reach out to Jez to see if he, um, you know, I mean, I don't think that he's made meetings, but, um, he may still be interested. I don't know. Um, I tried to reach out to him this week and wasn't able to get in touch. So, um, uh, so let's start with at least having one representative and then we'll, we can revisit it next month. How's that sound? So we got a motion from Doug and a second from Paul. Any further discussion? Um, call, call the question, Paul. Are you in favor?
Aye.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Thanks, Steve.
Sorry.
Um, next up is approving and signing our local emergency management plan. And that also. What?
Did you vote yet?
Yes, I did vote yes. I'm sorry. Thank you, Chris. Um, so our emergency management plan. Um, so this is something that Tom Johnson puts together for us and it's an update. It's what we do every year. Um, I looked it over. The only thing I saw that was incorrect was that he had clearly filled it out before Charlie had resigned as road foreman. So, um, the copy that I sent you, I believe I had removed Charlie's name as road foreman. Um, I had put in instead at one point, Paul, you as the contact as road commissioner. Um, and, um, you know, we can, we can always update that. Um, but we should, I would love to hear a motion to accept the, um, emergency management.
I'll make the motion that you sign it.
All right, perfect.
Second.
Who made the second?
Doug.
All right, Doug. Perfect. I will sign it. Or no, all in favor. Let's see. All in favor, Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes. Okay. Perfect. I will sign that and get that to, to, uh, to Tom and the powers that be. Um, so that's good. Uh, let's see. Next up was going to be our complaint, but we've already handled that. That was our shooting complaint. Um, so the next thing is our recycling audit fee. And I did not include this document, Bob, in the materials I sent you um, because it identified the person's name. And I don't think our goal here is to shame anyone, but rather to talk about the problem. Um, this is, I think, our fourth or fifth, um, at least our fourth fee that we've.
Third that I know of.
Third?
We had two $500 fines and then this one $745. That, unless there's another one.
I thought there was another, but that, it's fine. But we, so anyway, we, and, and again, these are fees that we're getting because people are putting, um, uh, garbage in with recycling. And, um, and in this case, the bags contained what looked like a glass syringe and needle, um, as well as, um, food stuff and clothing and, um, I don't know, all kinds of things. Um, I did, you all got the pictures through Janice. I just didn't include them in what I sent you because I, I didn't think it would be helpful because it does identify, there is a, um, piece of paper in there from the hospital. It was an invoice that identifies the individual's name whose garbage, it's reasonable to think that was, because that was it, with the garbage. Um, I think the larger issue is whether or not we should maybe establish a policy that, um, that when these fees come in, that we invoice the individuals who are identified. Um, the town obviously has to go ahead and pay it upfront, but should we be billing, um, individuals who are causing us these expenses? Cause at this point, we're, we're up to at least $1,745.
I think we know who does that.
I agree. I think we should bill them because it shouldn't be left to the whole town. And these people were told time and time again that dark bags do not go in recycle. And from the pictures that I looked through, uh, this was a dark bag and, well, I guess, well, they did, they didn't wanna pay 50 cents. Well, they're not paying anything now. They just put it in the dumpster across the way. It wasn't an accident. But, um, we, we can't keep, uh, we gotta set an example here and, you know, uh, it shouldn't be up to the town to pay this $745 fee. And maybe that'll make them think twice.
If, if we know who it is, I think they should pay it.
Yeah, I agree totally.
I'm making a motion that we make them pay it, that people would do it if we know who does it.
All right, we got a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second it.
All right. Any further discussion? Brad or Steve, do you have any thoughts?
Yes, I was going to say that I think that, um, with the bill, the pictures should be sent to that person. And, um, see what happens.
Yeah, I think to send that, cause that's, that's the proof of why it is they're getting the bill.
I mean, in the larger picture, we should actually have a policy.
Yeah.
Well, pretty much is. It's recycled, not garbage.
That's right.
And there was, like I said, there was an insulin syringe in there. Uh, and now.
I don't even think it was insulin. I think it was more than that from what I looked at.
No, no, no. You, you read, I, I blew that up, Brad, and it's insulin. Uh, it's a specified dose. What it's for, I don't have a clue because that syringe looked big enough for a horse.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And that was a 30 cc, yeah.
Yeah. If you look, if you get on there close, it does say insulin in a specified amount. Cause I, I, that's what I looked on there. But it is a monster, I tell you that.
Yeah, it's not like the ones I've normally seen.
No, that's a 30, that's like a horse syringe. That's like something that Steve would use on the cows. It's big. Yeah. Um, all right. So, um, so we, it'd probably be a good idea to, to, to write up a policy. We have a little policy book and I think what we're doing is establishing tonight with this, it sounds like that the motion on the floor is to establish a policy, um, to, uh, so it's not just to build these people, but to establish a policy that when we get, um, recycling audits and individuals are identified, um, that we, um, pass that expense on to the individual.
Right.
I agree.
How are, how are we going to do this if, say, I'm hauling Doug's garbage and I throw his garbage in recycling bin and you send Doug a bill?
I'm gonna put it in the recycling bin. I should sell what recycling, what A.
Right, but if, say, I'm hauling your garbage.
Right.
Yeah. And if I gotta.
And I'm pushing that Doug, but the town's gonna send you the bill.
Yeah. If I, uh, put a sticker on it, you know, it's, uh, not recyclable. In a white bag with no sticker, that's recyclable. Right?
Well, I, I see what Steve's getting at and this was, this had happened years ago with these trash haulers that were losing bags out of their cars. They're out of the back of their trucks because they were overloaded. And then when they found out it was so-and-so's bag, you go back to whoever the bag was identified and then let them explain or go to, they'll have to go after whoever hauled the bag in there. But somebody's gotta pay and it shouldn't be the town.
That's right. I mean, Jesus, $1,700, a lot of money to be lost already.
Right. So I, I say whoever's, whoever's name's on the bag or in, you know, that they are identified, the bill goes to them. And then if they've got a regular trash hauler that's hauling for them, um,
They take it.
They're gonna have to get the money out of them, but the town's gonna get their money one way or another. It's the only way we can do it fair.
Well, and, and if, if I'm paying somebody to haul my garbage and, and I find out that, um, that they're trying to take a shortcut and not have to pay for it and putting garbage in recycling, um, then I better, I better dismiss that person and not hire them anymore because it's gonna cost me if I don't. Yeah.
Exactly.
So, so we'll send this bill out and the picture and to this one. And then we'll also, um, try to draft up a little bit of a language for what the, the policy is to put in the policy book. And maybe at the next meeting, we'll bring that policy language up and, and get a final approval or what do people think?
Yes. And what about those other two? Did we have any identification to go with them? The two previous offenders?
Number two was, but that was the second time that it happened, but we didn't know what exactly who did what. So this one was pretty obvious.
So you don't think we can send one to the other person either?
I don't know. It, it's happened. That was back, what, three months ago?
Yeah, like February.
Yeah, three, four months ago.
I think the problem is.
Yeah, I think we just better take care of this one right here. And that may send a notice out to different people that they better straighten out.
Yeah. So what we're saying is that, that this one, from this point going forward, and we're gonna, we'll start sending them out. So we'll send out a bill to this person and, um, and, and letting people know that, that, that if they mess up and put the thing in the wrong thing, that they're, you know, that that's an expense and we are expecting them to incur that expense, not the town.
I agree.
Right.
Okay. All right. Um, we had a motion actually. We had a motion from Doug and it was, uh, uh, seconded by Paul. Um, let's see. So, um, all in favor, let's see. Paul?
Aye.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yeah.
Lynn, yes. All right. So moving on, we've got a discussion of our town hall auction. And I put that on there because I have a little bit of an update. Um, remember I had, um, I had approached the abutters to see if anybody wanted to make a, you know, an offer. Um, one of the abutters said that they were interested, but I have not heard back from them. And that was, uh, I don't know, it was easily two months ago, um, that I had that conversation. Um, and, uh, the second abutter said, showed some interest, but didn't say they would necessarily make an offer. But I, um, but I've had no offers from abutters.
And the third one said they definitely were not interested.
The third one sees, thank you for reminding me of that. That's right. The third one said that there's, they'd love to, but they just couldn't do that at this time. So, um, so it brings us to what we do. And that brought me back to talking to John Thrasher, our attorney, um, about the issues that we have regarding the fact that although the town has, there's an established septic and if you flush the toilets, it works. Um, but there is no written understanding or deed of easement with Smokey House allowing for the maintenance and the continual use of that septic area. I think my understanding from days of old with Smokey. I think my understanding from days of old with Smokey House is that that was something they granted to the town, as a favor to the town. But it wasn't something that they necessarily wanted to see that building sold to somebody else and that they had an obligation to keep a septic on their system. So we would have to disclose to anybody buying the place that there is, you know, there's, there's not a, a legal understanding about the septic system. We'd have to disclose the fact that, um, you know, where the, the boundary line is and that the, you know, that even the fire escape is on church property. And um, and there seems that there may be some contention about whose property the well is on um, as well. And thanks Brad for sending that picture. Um, don't know how I missed that all those years. Um, so we'd have to disclose those things. Now, it doesn't mean that somebody might not still buy the building. Somebody might buy it for storage. Um, you know, they, there's limited how they can use it because of those problems. But um, um, but the question that I had in my mind is it's gonna cost us money for an auction company to advertise it and everything. And then if we don't get an offer high enough, we could end up being out of money. So um, a thought that I had kicked around, and Brad, you and I talked about this a little bit, um, was the idea that maybe we do a little bit, try something like we did with the Silas Griffith, and we put it out for sort of best offer on uh, on Zillow or, you know, some of the real estate sites. Um, in other words, we're still looking for people who might, you know, make a bid instead of going through the auction route. But we're expanding our, um, our audience to not just be the abutters.
I think that's a good idea. I'm with, I'm well with that one.
Any other thoughts?
And that's, that's basically what we said, that we would put it out for bid. And then, you know, we can um, we can reject the bids if it appears that it's going to be something that um, would not be in the best interest of the town.
Yeah, that's, yeah. So we're gonna want to post this probably on Zillow. That was what we did before. Bob, you helped with this at, I think, right?
I did, yeah.
Can we do that with um, you know, bids must be received by a certain date?
Well, I think you could, you could say something like that, but, you know, it's a real estate listing, right? So you can pull a listing whenever you want to pull it.
Sure.
Right.
How that works.
I think that's the best way to do it. Have an auction, you know, where it's gonna cost us a lot of money for the auction, you advertise and stuff. And like you say, but if we, they, nobody's gonna run a bid on it.
Alright, it's, it's.
Hold on.
Yeah, it's a problem with property, there's some issues. So um, we would have to put together a little description and um, and uh, um, Bob, would it be possible if we did that, for you to post that for us as you did before?
Yeah, I mean, if you guys give me the pictures and whatever you'd like.
Yeah, we have it. We have a nice little brochure, actually.
Oh, okay. You know, give me, give me that and I can post it for you guys.
Thank you.
Okay, and then what we have to do is make sure we have the caveats in there about the um, yeah, I, and actually, I don't know. I, well, oof, um. So there's a question. Do we put those caveats right in the ad? Or do we let people that show interest and then tell them? I, I kinda think we just need to be upfront about it, not waste our time or theirs.
Yeah, and like, what, what's the price we wanna put on it? Do we have a price?
No, we don't wanna put a price on it. We want them to give us a price on it.
So I'm not sure how that would work on Zillow. I'm not sure if you can put a no price on Zillow.
Yeah, and if you're gonna say best offer, you have to have a date that these have to be received by. Or otherwise, how do you know? The best offer could come ten years from now.
Yeah, I mean, Zillow doesn't work that way, I don't think. I mean, there may be sites that are auction sites for real estate that I can look into that aren't that costly. You know, I could, instead of doing Zillow, you do an auction site.
Yeah.
Right, that's how that would be handled then. You could handle it like you guys are thinking.
Yeah, would you, would you do a little research and get back to us on that?
Sure, thanks.
Thank you, Bob.
Sure.
Thanks, Bob.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Bob.
That'd be great. That'd be great. Um, then the next order of business is that um, at our last meeting, I think somebody asked where we were with our Brock rehab loans. And Tammy got back to us and she's put us up a letter, which is a sample past due letter. Um, and if we approve that letter, then those would start going out. Um, let me see, uh, I can, it's very short and sweet. I just have to find it. Here we go. Um, basically, we'd write to each party that still owes the town money that would say, this is a reminder that there is an outstanding balance on your home rehabilitation loan you have with the town of Danby. According to our payment records, the last payment received was on, and we'd give that date, whatever that was, for whatever amount, leaving a balance of whatever that is. Uh, your agreement calls for monthly payments of X. Please remit your payments to the town of Danby. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact uh, uh, me. And uh, and she's suggesting that I sign it. Oh, nice. Yeah, uh, we're not sure. I want my phone number on there. I think we'll give it the town phone number. But, but I think we do want people, um, it occurred to me that right now, there may be people with um, more extreme financial situations if they've been furloughed or without a work for a while. And so, um, by all means, we would want a number that says that, you know, you know, to, to contact us. Um, if they, you know, that we can always come to some other arrangements with them. But right now, we have no communication. So how do people feel about this letter?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think the letter is good, and I think that we have established a committee. I'm not sure if you're on the committee, Lynn, or not.
Yeah, you know, actually, I'm not on the committee. And as for who signs the letter.
Yeah, so it should be signed by whoever is in charge of that, which I thought was Tammy.
Uh, I think it is Tammy. Uh, but the other thing I think might be appropriate is to have the treasurer sign the letter.
Right, and he's on the committee.
He's on the committee.
And that's, you know, that's where, that's where the check would go.
Yeah, let me talk with Tammy and Doug about that, but I think that's more appropriate because that's where it's gonna go. And that's who they would, if they need to make some alternative arrangements for payment, that's who they would be negotiating with.
Right.
Now, so should we approve that letter with that change?
Don't move.
So we got a movement from Doug? Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Oh, that Doug's seconding. Who moved in the first place?
Paul.
Oh, I gotcha. Thanks. Um, any further discussion? Alright, Paul, in favor?
Yeah.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes. Yeah.
Lynn, yes. Okay, um, we had one other business, which was a fleet permit. Um, it was in the packet I sent. Um, it's from um, Hunter Excavating. Hunter Transport and Timber, uh, four trucks, largest ninety-nine thousand. Um, do you hear a motion to, to accept and grant that fleet permit?
I'll make a motion.
Did you get that, Chris? Who did those? I didn't either. Who made the motion?
I made, Doug.
I seconded it.
Alright, so Doug and Brad. Alright, all in favor? Paul?
Hi.
Doug?
Yes.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Lynn, yes, okay. Um, uh, I guess we're to public comment. I think we have somebody from the public here. Do we have any public comment from our mystery public person? Um, so I guess we won't be able to.
Okay, so user just unmuted. Come in, Muser.
Um, I wonder, my phone's ringing. Maybe somebody's trying to get through. There you go. Um. So, yes, if somebody's there, we'd love to know because the record should show that you're there. And also, if there's public comment, we inviting that. Darn, I was hoping we'd have people join us. I thought this might be a way that people could participate.
Well, I do have other business.
Okay. That's, yeah, that was next.
I would like to uh, have a special meeting down on the Timmott Road to discuss the ditch that is in, that's just been put in through my access to my field.
And you want it to be a full select board meeting, or did you just wanna meet with Paul or?
Well, I, I think it'd be better if it was a full meeting. That way, we can all discuss and all of us be on the same page as to what's going on here.
Why, what's wrong?
Is there, yeah, is there any reason we can't talk about now?
Yeah, what's wrong?
Get into my field, I've been getting into it.
You got a driveway right there.
Which isn't wide enough to get the chopper and dump wagon through.
Well, when, uh, where you're going to get your round bales and go up through that way with them.
And you know as well as I do, if it's wet, that I'm not gonna get up through there. And if it's wet, I'm not gonna get into that driveway with my dump truck.
Well, you're gonna have to put a culvert in. A wide, longest culvert.
So it's up to me to put a culvert in where the town has ditched through where I've been going in for twenty years.
So.
Gotta put ditches.
Paul, you want to, to, to explain what's happening on the road, just so that everybody sort of, you know?
Yeah, and I, it's hard to explain with, well, Brad probably not familiar with it. And I've been traveling that road for fifteen hundred years. Nothing to do with the access that was there. Uh, we, we're having this road uh, mow made and repaid. And in order to do that, we've gotta have proper ditches on the road for water drainage. I know Steve has been using that, that, well, so-called driveway to get into the middle of the field or whatever. But I believe that by having that there, it's holding back what water there is from the culvert going up to that house that Davenport's put in. It's, it's fairly level there, but I think we can get the water to run to Sucker Brook. And that's what I told Larry to do. And I didn't do it to cut Steve out of his access to his road. But I looked and there was room or could be made room. And somebody had already driven through there is the driveway to that red house. Somebody had gone through the grass, and I don't, not sure how much room Steve needs for wet to get in there. And then when Steve explained to me that it was wet in that area, well, it's wet all the way from beyond uh, the old schoolhouse down there, it's all swamp, all the way to past uh, almost to Doug's barn at the bottom of the hill. And a lot of that's got to do with the pond raising and lower end, depends on how high the beaver dam is. And the soccer field across the way from that same field, pretty much the north part of it, is half of that's underwater part of the time anyways. And like I said, I didn't do it to not have Steve be able to get into the access. I'm just trying to get water to drain down through to Sucker Brook to the south. And I'm hoping, I haven't been up there in two days, to see if it's deep enough to where the water will run and possibility it might help a little bit on Steve's part getting into there. I don't, I don't wanna have to see him go in the mud to get in there. But the place, the place I take care of north or south of that, the original road before the house was built, you can't get into that either. I mean, they, they built the ramp to get down to it. And so, you know, it's a problem there, and I don't mind trying to work it out. But I had to ditch the road because I'm hoping to get uh, you know, ditch it and the brush stop before Tommy gets here to paint. And like I said, I didn't mean it to destruct your driveway, Steve. I'm just trying to get uh, water to run to the south to Sucker Brook.
Why can't you add onto that culvert, uh, and that driveway is already there? Put a, an eight-foot piece onto that?
Uh, it could be if that's what will help Steve get into the meadow. I thought of moving uh, the guy's post back a little bit. Uh, but like I said, I'm not sure how wide the equipment is he needs to get in there. And that, you know, I never did get up to, you know, when they were doing it to get Steve to find out, you know, what the wet he does need for that driveway. That'd be the solution there.
Yeah, so culvert now, is that a twenty-foot culvert that's in that driveway?
Uh, it's, that's the minimum required, and I believe that's what it is.
Steve's.
It's a twenty-foot culvert, but you're not, you're coming in at an angle. You're not gonna be able to use the full twenty-foot because of the chain that they've got across there.
Well, move that post up. They can move that post up on the order chain to cross.
So let me, um, Steve brought up a point that I think.
The lawyer.
Yeah, Steve brought up a point, which, which is what the, what, um, you know, that Paul had mentioned to me. And so I thought we should check, check on it. Because Steve, you're not the only one that's in this situation. Earlier tonight, Paul, you mentioned that red house below Hades. Um, and that if we have to, there, um, when we do the work on the Danby Hill Road, that they're gonna have to put in a culvert, or they're gonna find themselves not being able to access their house. And so the question that I posed to our attorney is, you know, what's our responsibility as we're, you know, ditching roads that didn't need to be ditched before because water has changed? Um, you know, whose responsibility is it to put in culverts? And the, and, and especially because, you know, I was aware, Steve, that you've used that for a number of years just as that house has been there for, well, heck, it was built probably not long after I moved to town, which is thirty years or more. So, um, um, so, you know, I was thinking about that, that the people have had a long time of enjoying access to our public road without having to have structures in place to make that possible. So whose responsibility is it? And Steve, the answer I got from John Thrasher is that it is the town's responsibility to maintain its roads um, to the standard that it needs to protect the, the public infrastructure and the public investment. Um, so that means ditching and anything else that we have to do. And that if the landowners wants to still access the public highway at that same location, then it is up to them to put in um, structures. And so, um, so, so the answer to your question, which seemed like a really good question to me, you know, as to, you know, whose obligation is it? It, it's not the town's obligation. Um, and the only other I'd think is it's not our obligation. That doesn't mean we couldn't do something. But if we're wanting to do something, um, and we set precedence with, for one person, we need to be prepared to do it in other places as well.
Right.
So when do you plan on having the ditch done?
Good question.
Ditches done now, ain't it, Paul?
I didn't, I didn't catch Steve. Like, his was broken up.
I asked when you're gonna have the ditch done.
And if, I, like I said, I haven't been up since maybe, whatever day I was there was Tuesday, I think. I'm not sure what else I did after that. I haven't been up, up that area. I should be there tomorrow where I can take a look at it. They were supposed to finish ditching that all the way down to Sucker Brook.
Yeah, they did.
They did.
They did?
Okay.
Are you gonna have Larry reset that driveway culvert?
Uh.
Why, why should he have to reset?
That, well.
Because that driveway culvert is, the driveway culvert is five inches lower on the north end than it is on the south end. It will hold water right there.
Well, it'll get there, held a lot of water before they put that ditch down through there.
Well, maybe, maybe we'll have to go to the landowner. Well, maybe, maybe we'll have to go to the landowner if that's creating a problem. And, uh, what you were saying, Lynn, and that gets into the legal part, which I don't, I don't have any clue. If that's creating a problem holding back water, uh, can we have them redo that culvert, not at our expense? I mean, if, if that'll solve the problem, yeah, I mean, I'm willing to-
That culvert wasn't holding back water until you put a ditch in to try and take it the other direction.
Uh, on the north side of that, it was a pond.
Yeah, that water's been in-
Yeah, that water's been in there for a long time. I mean, since that driveway's been there. It had nothing to do with us ditching, because that just started two weeks ago.
There's some water in that.
Yeah, I wanna, I wanna get this resolved and to help you out, Steve, but, you know, I wanna make sure that, like, like I talked with, uh, Lynn and I talked with Bobby at the same time. I said, you know, yeah, we could stick a culvert in where your access area was. But the flow that's going down through there is not enough to keep it cleaned out. And then we're gonna end up with a plugged culvert, which we don't go around and unplug them like they're supposed to, you know? You know, uh, when Charlie was there, they were doing quite a few culverts every year through the fire department. And I just, in the future, I just wanna see that be able to carry water down through there without having another obstruction down through there. And if we can resolve it by whatever means to widen that out or whatever, where that guy's driveway is, to help you out and keep that water going, I'm open for any suggestions.
Paul, could, can you meet with, can you meet with Steve and, and eyeball it and see if you can come up with some ideas?
Well, I still think if that guy moves his theme, uh, and then pulse where he got there, up the ways.
Yeah.
Then Steve probably, yeah. He doesn't need the chain down the road.
Does seem like a good idea.
Yeah, I'll, I'll meet with Steve. I'll meet with Steve, but I got, like I said, I gotta get my lawns done and tomorrow and, you know, I'll meet with him at some point when I get caught up with, you know, on my schedule and then, you know, like I said, I wanna resolve this so he's got access to the meadows, which he's always had. But I wanna keep our, uh, ditches clean, or be able to keep them clean and the water moving, so. Yeah, I'm willing to meet with him.
Yes, Steve, do you, what's your, um, what's your, what's your, um, um, need for, uh, um, accessing the field? I don't know what your crop is there and when you need to get on the field. What's your timeline?
September.
Okay.
Did you say September?
Yep.
Okay, well, I hope that, I hope that we can get something resolved by then. Uh, at least talk it over and then, like I said, if we have to widen the culvert out where you can get in, uh, maybe we'll work it out with the landowner. I mean, it's not really, well, I don't, I don't know, once a culvert's been put in, I don't know if it's our liability or the landowners if something's wrong with it. But I'd be willing, I'm sure we could come up with an extension of, you know, a 10-foot extension or something, if that'll help you out. And I'd be willing to let the road crew, uh, um, put the equipment up there and do it, just so, you know, I wanna make sure that you've got access to that field where you're comfortable.
Now, if, if we do that, do it for one, they're gonna do it for all, everybody.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's true, uh-
Eric, here, here.
Let's, let's go through, let's, let's go through the landowner first. I don't even know the guy. And just explain what's going on. And maybe a little help from Steve, maybe, I don't know the guy, I don't know who he is. He might be reasonable enough if he, you know, I don't wanna tell him that Steve can't do the meadows no more if you don't comply. I mean, that seems kinda harsh, but-
Well, yeah, but all that guy got to do is move that post and that chain and Steve can get in and out.
Yeah, as long as he can get in. Yeah, as long as he can swing in and out, but I, like I said, I'll meet with you, Steve, I'm, I'm not sure on your widest equipment. You know, how much room you need up through there. And, uh, that would be the simplest solution, is move the post back, but I wanna make sure you can get in there, you know, without any problem.
All right, so you, you all will meet, and, and I mean, if, if Steve, if you still wanted us all there, I'm not saying we can't, but, but maybe that's the place to start. Does that make sense?
Well, that's fine. You're still gonna have to do some digging, because that ditch that Larry put in is not deep enough.
Probably go deeper.
We have to do, yeah, we have to go deeper, we will.
Uh, when I checked, when I checked it the other night, it's pitch in an inch and a quarter and four foot the wrong direction.
Well, we'll, uh, we'll have to deal with that then.
All right.
I have a question while we're on this. Let, go ahead, Steve.
No, go ahead.
My question is more general. Someone has a driveway culvert. It's an old metal culvert, it's rusted away, it's plugged, and now the water is running in the road. Who's responsible?
They are.
The land, the landowner.
Okay, then I wish somebody would get in touch with VTAL and get this culvert fixed down from the town office, because the water's running out in the road. Tommy had to take it upon himself to pave a gutter because the water was running down the road. The town neglected to open the, um, uh, the drain on that side of the road. And, um, the, the problem has been lessened because Tom took care of it, but the water's still running out in the road because of the old culvert across the VTAL building driveway.
So, so are you saying that what-
Oh, the VTAL, okay.
Yeah, the telephone company.
We can send them a notice that the pair of their, their driveway's causing a problem and that we require them to fix it.
And what about what happened up there on Lily Hill? The guy that put the rocks and blocked the culvert under his driveway.
It was weak.
He's, he's got a, he's getting a phone call. I got his, I got his number from Janice the other day.
Okay, 'cause that's been now a long time.
Well, he promised us last year before the snow hit, that he was gonna do it and he didn't, so I got the number from Janice Tuesday, or whatever day it was when I stopped in, and I just haven't had a chance to, uh,
Okay.
call him, so that is on the list.
Thank you.
All right. Any other business to bring in front, or?
Yeah, I got one thing.
Okay.
People ain't gonna probably appreciate it from the state, but I just wanna go on record that I am totally, totally opposed to forcing our towns to collect food scraps. I thank Steve for picking them up, if he's still doing it. But all we're opening ourselves up to, and I've been reading this website that they got with all the complaints. If, I, I got nothing against composting. I mean, if you wanna do it at your house, fine. Uh, there's people that do it, have success with it. But the most people that I've been reading, being that we got our bear problem worse than it's ever been, are having bear problems, and the state is just dancing around telling them all kinds of solutions. And if we start having everybody bring their food scraps, there's gonna be a couple of problems. For one thing, and Steve's probably seen this, and I don't think it's got improved any, is they just throw a bag in with food scraps and I'm not gonna, Cliffy reach in there and probably Steve go on either and get it out, so, you know, there's no control over the food scrap going in there, and then Steve can't come and pick them up every day. And we've had already bear complaints on Mount Paver Avenue. And I've got bears all over my yard up here, so I know what it's like. But I don't want Cliffy to pull in some morning and have some bear in there. And, uh, he gets out the opposite side of his truck. And, 'cause they're unpredictable as hell, and we're, we're gonna have a problem. And if anybody's seen the video, Rod Daylight, the bear in the dumpster over at the Center Rowland Snack Bar, I mean, he figured out a way to get into that dumpster in these little plastic cans that we got. They've got them, they're, they're just gonna make a mess. And Cliffy's gonna have to clean it up, and like I said, the state is basically put that ball in our park and let us deal with it, and I am opposed to having to deal, forcing us as of July 1st to take food scraps. So I just wanna, want that to go on record and, um, let everybody know that, um, if you wanna do it at your own house, that's fine. That's, you know, if you wanna deal with the bears, that's fine. But, uh, I don't want Cliffy to be in danger or anybody at the town office. Uh, when there's bears roaming back and forth uh, in and out of our food scrap plastic bucket. So, that's all I got to say.
Maybe anything to add?
I am also opposed to, and if, um, somebody would like to draft a resolution to that, I would certainly second it. And we did have a bear in the dumpster on Main Street right next to the library also, two nights ago.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, they're common occurrence. So, you know, we're, the worst part is the-
Once they find food, be back, once they find food, they'll always come back.
Oh, yeah. That one keeps visiting here. And, uh, you know, the, I mean, the, uh, bird feeders are in, everything, and I've had them in the middle of the day. And, uh, well, the state, state don't like how I take care of them, but that's beside the problem. So, and I, oh, and by the way, uh, uh, thanks Steve for at least coming down and picking it up and getting rid of it, 'cause some towns don't even have that option. You know, and, uh-
Let me just ask, Steve, is there anything that you would tell people about how they are using it that would help you or help this situation in terms of how people bring their scraps?
Quit using plastic bags.
Exactly. You know, one, one statement from the, the website on the solid waste thing, it says, "Oh, just put in the bucket and put it underneath your sink until you get ready to go." And I'm like, yeah, I wanna smell that. And then I have maggots and flies in there. You know, they're, they're hops dipping around. All this issue coming up with these harebrained ideas to solve the problem, which they created. And somebody actually says, well, gee, maybe we can have Cliffy roll the, the dumpster or the fan to the, uh, bay of the garage. Well, I'm not gonna go in on Monday morning and smell friggin' rotten crap in there or have a bear get through the window, 'cause they will, if there's a way to get in, they'll get in.
Yep, you're right.
If you watch that bear on Center Rowland Snack Bar, he managed to pull that bag through that crack on the top of that thing. And they're, they turn into magicians when there's food in there.
Well, I just want, I wanna one thing, 'cause I do compost here all the time. And of course, it's easy, 'cause I have horses and enough manure that I can bury stuff, so I don't have a problem with the bears. But in terms of the problem with under your sink in a bucket, you can get buckets that have filters on them, and you really don't smell it if you use the, a, a proper composting bucket. Um, I mean, I'm not saying if we have shrimp shells that it wouldn't smell, 'cause, you know, hey, fish smells. But, um, um, but on a, you know, on a usual basis, and when it's emptied, you know, as frequently, um, and our dump is open three times a week, um, I think people can deal with it in their own house, but I think you raise a good point of how do we deal with the safety a- at the dump.
Right, and having Cliffy, when the bear does tear it all apart, it's gotta be cleaned up. And I, I, I don't wanna be part of cleaning up a bunch of crap that's fermented and stinking and everything and trying to get it back in, into the garbage, you know, so it's, I don't know, um, the state really, all they want is gone from the landfills. And they're throwing it in our lap to deal with the problem.
Yeah, hey, Steve-
Yeah, in our case, it's in the most populated section of town, which is ridiculous.
Steve, have you talked to people at Solid Waste? Are, are other towns having issues with this?
The only other towns that I know of for sure that are doing it are paying Casellas to pick it up. And I believe it's $65 for the first tote, and then it's like $30 per tote after that, but I don't know if they're having issues or not with bears. I know the school is keeping their tote inside the school because the bear knocked it over down there one day.
Okay. Well, if people get more information on ideas and what we can do, it, 'cause it does sound like we, it sounds like we have a, a, a problem that may be brewing.
Well, Mount, Mount Paver solved the problem. They didn't put the food scrap in, they bring it ours, like, I don't, like, I just like them doing it. They're just supposed to have, you're supposed to have it down there, and they say, well, we got bears. So-
So they bring it to us? Well, that's easy.
That's why I got my bear problem. My bear problems created since Dampy Dumpster, or the Mount Paver Dumpster's down over the hill 200 yards from me on Route 7, and I never had a bear problem until they got their open container dumpsters down there, and they're forever hauling them out of the dumpster in the morning. You know, if they had closed dumpsters, I wouldn't have as many bears up here as I do. And I never had a bear up here all the 35 years I lived here, until like 12 years ago, when that dumpsters went in down there, and then all of a sudden I'm ransacked with bears all over the damn place, all hours of the day and everything.
Yeah, well, we have bears up here, and, 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 and the main reason they're coming around is that I um, have a, a neighbor who uses Casella to pick up her garbage, and she sets it out the night before, and, you know, the bears get to it before Casellas does, and, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, Yogi and Boo Boo.
Yeah. All right, um, any other business, or would I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
All right.
I second it.
Motion made and seconded. Any other comment, any last ditch things?
Yeah, I got one quick comment. I like this, sitting in my office, I just watched my cat, that's a rabbit out of my blueberry bushes. Can't get that sitting in the town office.
That's right.
You like the motion. Well, I don't mind a remote either, and it looks like we now have, uh, Nick, Ricky? Is that, oh, you have somebody named Nick who's joined us, or maybe that's who's been with us? Hello, Nick, do you wanna say hello, or identify yourself? Uh, okay, yep, maybe.
Okay, working right for him.
We all set?
Yes, so, well, we did have a motion to adjourn, um, but we have to call the question, Paul. Adjourn. Doug?
Yeah.
Brad?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And Lynn. All right, well, thank you all.